Welcome to our regular council meeting for Monday, October 6th. Invitation will be given by Councilperson Nick Auguste. Please stand up and pledge a flag.
Almighty God, you have set before us the responsibilities of the city. We ask your guidance and direction that we, the members of council, may do what is best for the people that live here. Amen.
Amen.
Lord, please introduce the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You get a motion for the minutes for the work session of nine twenty-one and ten two seventeen.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. At this point, we recognize the visitors. Please raise your hand if you wish to speak. With call upon, please use a podium. Could you restate your name and address into the microphone and limit your comments to three minutes? Any dialogue must be conducted through me as president of council, although your comments or questions can be addressed to the council of administration or both. Okay, legislation, if you wish to comment, legislation must request to do so at this time. Those making such a request will then be called upon after the reading. Any dialogue must be conducted through me as president of council, although your comments or questions can be addressed to the council of administration or both. When called upon, please use a podium. Remember, clearly state your name and address into the microphone and limit your questions or comments to three minutes. We have ordinance number one, ordinance number two, ordinance number three. Now, we're gonna, we're gonna have our presentation, council first, from economic development, Kathy Biederman. Please.
Thank you. Some right up. Um, I think we have some of our updated information on businesses here for the community. So, thank you for the opportunity to provide on the economic development projects that we've been working on. This year, we had a strong focus on citywide revitalization and site-specific locations tackling one site at a time. We've taken a targeted approach to identifying key opportunities within sites and tackling these sites from an environmental and redevelopment standpoint. Here are the projects that we've addressed this past year through a four hundred thousand dollar US EPA grant that enabled us to start working on these sites. The first is Chase Bank with eight hundred thousand dollar remediation project there. We have identified a private prospect for them. It ties sixty jobs in the site with an hourly wage of twenty-five dollars per hour. The investment in that site needed is seven point five million. The corner of Bank Building is another building that we worked on, one thirteen Main Street. We moved prospect tied to that site with ten jobs. They'll be invested eight hundred thousand to one hundred. And we're under a sixty day due diligence period with that project now that will be ending at the end of October. All pending, well, we will be closing on that building then. Former Bill Schwartz Building, if you're familiar with that, it's off of Liberty Street. We do a good company and that is a result of the work that we've done there. STD Management is a company. They have ten new jobs and that'll be ten fifteen dollars per hour. Four eleven North St. Clair is a project that you're familiar with. They came here before council, based on the project that we've been working on there to create a campus-like environment, Concord Road Equipment, ten, um, five new jobs projected with that, four hundred thousand dollar investment. The former Lake photo building is another third free-stage avenue. We are targeting that site for demolition, the existing building and reuse of the site. Two sixty-five North State is across from St. Mary's. It's the oldest, um, credit building and that's proposed for the community center. And some of that's done before the planning commission now. Federico Tire, we built two tanks out of that site, sixty-one South State Street, and that's planned for expansion. Former gas station, two oh nine Los Water for sale and the triangle between Bank and State Street. Upon an environmental assessment, we identified about four hundred thousand needed in cleanup, so we are now seeking cleanup funds for that site. The projects that we, that have been identified in the previous slide are now a part of our overall strategic revitalization program. Once I've identified the exact cost for remediation and overcoming obstacles to development, I try to seek the money that can be invested separately into the project to drive new investments to these sites. So, from a grant perspective, these are the grants that I obtained last year and the ones that I'm making application for going into twenty eighteen. The CDGB grants, you can see the projects that were associated with that for thirty-five thousand last year. The grants, there's a couple other grants there from PCIC and the visitor bureau. Going into this year, we have thirty-five thousand secured in CDGB funds and another three hundred thousand security US EPA funds. We're gonna be making application for about four hundred thousand, which is half of the rate needed for Chirsey's Bank with pending the, the prospect moving forward with that site. For seven fifty Bank Street, we're putting two grant applications, one's in right now and another one going in this fall or early winter, January, for four hundred thousand for that cleanup for that site. And we've been helping with the property owner about a future restaurant location. We give those cleanup funds. TLCI grant, both Leanne and Doug made application to the TLCI grant to extend the streetscape from Main Street into North Park Place, as well as another grant to extend the streetscape along Washington Street to complement future development investments, both on the college site as well as our former hospital site. So, as I said previously, we're taking a one-on-one property approach, looking for key investment opportunities and opportune timing to take advantage of the resources that may be able to support faster investments in these sites. So, these remain our two key project, project sites going into twenty eighteen as a part of our retail downtown business retention, expansion and attraction efforts. We did have one retention project that we worked on last year and four retail recruitment projects that are underway. Richmond Street remains a high priority for us. Richmond Street redevelopment will be a focus of ours now going into the next five years. We had to kind of give the hospital site underway, but now we're refocusing our efforts. Now that's moving forward, back onto Richmond Street with the, going back to the Richmond Street corridor plan. This map shows targeted redevelopment areas throughout the city, but it also specifies areas that we've targeted on Richmond Street. This upcoming three hundred thousand dollar grant that we have for the US EPA will target these sites and we have already been engaging with retail brokers to discuss the merits of specific sites that may be opportunities for their clients in this corridor. While we talk about building money in the grants and kickstarting these projects, the core of our efforts really continue to be business retention, expansion and attraction. This year, from a business retention and expansion standpoint, Grand Rock Corporation had a one point two million dollar investment in purchase of their building retaining fifty-five jobs with ten new jobs projected. Concord Road Equipment's expansion, as I talked about, was a four hundred thousand dollar investment with five new jobs projected. Weaver, Weaver Meats is making an eight hundred thousand dollar investment now with ten new jobs projected. They're expecting to have shovel in ground this week. Traction Projects, PCC Airfoils did make a one million dollar investment with ten jobs tied to that project, increasing their payroll to just over a million dollars. Marvel Corporation has made a twelve point five million dollar investment with a hundred and thirteen new jobs and has a payroll of two million seven hundred ninety-two thousand. And then we've got three other manufacturers that we're discussing early-stage expansion opportunities with going into twenty eighteen. This is some highlights of the recent investments being made by Marvel Corporation in their new Ohio plant here in Plainsville. The company expressed their main reason for locating in Plainsville was a strong skillset of the workforce and plastic injection molding. After the tour, the company did express their gratitude for council's support of their operations and for investing time and better understanding the investments that the company is making in the community. They, they made sure to let us know that this was Marvel Corporation's largest, largest expansion ever and something that weighs heavy in impact and opportunity for the future of their operations and profitability. Finally, I'll talk a little bit about the former hospital site. We do have an RSQ that was released on that site and we have very strong interest in residential development and for the downtown as a result. As it pertains to this site, I'll say that there's no chicken or the egg theory in what we're working on economic development-wise and our approach, all the things that I've talked about in the previous slides, our strategic approach to revitalizing our downtown and bringing in new investments into the downtown that really support this development site. Under Monica's leadership, we've been directed to ensure that the plans that we're setting in place are ones that are gonna lead to long-term sustainability within the city and increase property values that will lead to elevating the community as a whole. We're going back to tying the site development into the overall plans that were set within our downtown master plan and our original comprehensive plan, and both those plans identify key elements of sustainability and to focusing our economic development directions going forward in that, in that form. The interest in the city is extremely strong. The request for, or the request for qualifications that we received back on seven point five we per se, four of those were regional firms and two of those were national firms and they're very strong players in high-quality urban redevelopment, residential redevelopment. So, we're now in the process of starting a very thorough analysis and vetting process of those development teams with a consultant to vet the operational and financial capabilities in these firms and to establish a format going forward in the complex negotiation process that's now gonna continue amongst the final parties to quantify the financing options that go into the project as well as the impacts of those options on the project and the community. While we set the projected selection date for late November, I will say that, you know, that that may be a flexible timeframe. We wanna make sure that we do the due diligence necessary to get this project underway and making sure that we have a defined number interval of understanding between these development partners as we move forward with those final selections. So, we plan to keep engaging with council, keep you informed throughout the process and then we will be working with the Economic Development Committee of council to, as we narrow down those selections, just to continue to engage you to make sure that we're going in the direction that we foresee. I will say that we visited the sites that these developers have done within the region and the sites that they've been involved with have recreated downtowns. They brought an influx of young professionals and millennials into the community. They have definitely increased property values of homes surrounding the area. They impacted retail positively in those developments that have abutted, that have abutted retail. So, we're definitely eager to start those discussions now with those development firms and then we are moving forward this week now, starting the interview process with them. So, lastly, I'll just say that we are going to also be engaging in the economic development strategic plan going into this year and as a part of that, I'll have a stakeholder engagement process. So, I would encourage anyone interested in being a part of that process or being more informed about that strategic plan to please reach out to me and I will make sure that you're involved with that and at least informed about what's happening. This will set a new five-year strategic plan for economic development for the city and that plan will go from twenty nineteen through twenty twenty-four. So, again, thank you for your opportunity to be here and help me answer any questions.
Question. Ms. Sheen?
Um, the old state credit building. You said that's going to be a Hispanic community center?
Uh, so, we're working with a group through the Lake County Land Bank that is looking at that site for that purpose.
So, what happened to the incubator kitchen?
That's the same thing.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, they have a lot of different things kind of combined into that.
Can we go back to the, the map that had the Richmond corridor? And could you just talk a little bit more about, um, what that redevelopment was, the philosophy or theory going into that?
Yeah, so, we're targeting very specific sites in that Richmond Street area that may be opportunities for redevelopment and these are sites that are either underutilized or could be considered kind of light in that area. And what we're trying to do is talk with retail folks about, based on the traffic cops that are on those corners and based on a retail-friendly desired site, are these potentials for redevelopment? And if so, we'll be investing those US EPA dollars to do site assessments to determine what environmental issues there may be there, what the potential impacts of those environmental issues may be, and then we assume the costs and then we go forward and working with.
And let me, speaking of retail, what exactly, how would you describe that?
Anything that's permitted in a B two zoning.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
Which, if somebody was watching this, what is permitted in a B two zoning?
Oh my gosh, it's a long list. You're gonna make me go into that. So, I'm saying general, general business, so.
So, I, you know, right now, you have, you know, you have McDonald's, Taco Bell, you have Gary's Two Again or whatever the, what, what other types of?
You have Backwood Plumbing there also.
Yes, Backwood Plumbing, Walker Brothers. What, what other types of?
I will say that the interest that you're gonna see on Richmond Street is more national base or, you know, larger regional-based interest.
Okay.
So, you're not gonna find a lot of pop shops necessarily going into Richmond Street. It is gonna be more focused in that larger commercial component.
You have that property on the corner of Bank and State. Is that price also going to be tearing the building down or is that just?
No, that's actually reused with the existing building. It was classified as a Class C, um, Class C gas station and based on the redevelopment that was necess, or the remediation that was necessary on that, it's about four hundred thousand for, for additional site assessment and cleanup. There's two options for cleanup. One is two hundred ninety-five thousand and three hundred ninety-five thousand, so we're gonna walk through the larger, we're gonna walk through the larger pot of money and hope that we can do the better cleanup on the site as much as possible.
Any thoughts for the old hotel site?
So, I love that site. I think that there's a lot of opportunity there. I think as we move forward with his plans for the former hospital site and whatever we engage on that, as that goes forward, I think that's gonna be our next site. I, I see that being more of a residential site at this point, but commercial interest that we've had on that has been relatively minimal and there's a lot of photography issues with the site that lends itself more to a residential.
Okay. Would be a next view of the lake, the park and things like that.
And you may end up finding like a mixed use on there too in some fashion, but it's a small site. It's just two acres.
Katie?
Just go, go ahead, Katie.
I was gonna ask, the Richmond Street corridor, is there a design review on that?
Yeah, there is a, it's a separate, it's not the same as the downtown, but it's a private review for sure.
All right. Kathy, I noticed a lot of work being done on some of the buildings, the commercial buildings on Moore Street and Street and I have no idea what to watch here. But I noticed Tony Subway worked on on the exterior and then there were two other places. One, I think, was where they had, they were selling, I don't know, it looked like a little retail shop. And then across the street, they're doing some cement work on the buildings and things like that. Do you have any ideas?
Yeah, so, Tony Subway is La Hispania. Pasqual Rodriguez has actually purchased that location and he's planning to expand his grocery business into that location as well as having like a little restaurant. I think he's still planning to have a little restaurant type setting there. So, he's been putting a lot of money and effort and time into that building, so that's the work that you're seeing there. The, one thing you're talking about, the small store, perhaps the owner there has one space that's available for lease right now and he's trying to sell that space. He's been making improvements to it to get it up to car so that he can hopefully lease that space out. It's mostly a retail space. And then the carpet work, I'm not sure.
It's a steel barber shop.
It's a steel barber shop?
Yeah, the corner of Cross.
Oh, Bowman's old place there? Um, yeah, I don't know. I haven't talked with them. That hasn't been a space since Bowman's Barber was there, so I really don't have a bunch of information on it because it's attached to a house. So, if you have anybody that you know of that, you know, I can contact there if you have any, because I'm, because it is a retail space that I'm gonna need contact information on.
The work that they're doing is beautiful.
Is it?
Yeah.
Hmm.
Just two other questions. Over by the, the old co-manufacturing, interested in there or is that, or is that, I know they're putting a truck, new train for us to track in now, but.
Yeah, so, um, the company that is across the tracks on the northeast side, uh, DeRusso Company, they are, they purchased the, the large building. It's in the middle of the L shape building there on South State to the right across from the office building. Um, the L shape building is still available there. Uh, the co-manufacturing office building, the port authority appears to still be moving forward with the demolition of that building.
And then the, the other question that I get asked a lot is the, the old ice cream store.
The old ice cream site?
Is there anything with the college you don't care moving?
Yeah, so, we've continued talking with the college along this process and the college is engaged with us on the, it wants to be engaged with us in the interview processes as we go forward with these development partners. They've actually met with quite a few of the development partners that we've talked to already and they do have an interest in putting together an RFP to move forward with their dormant cores on that site, but we haven't heard yet that I know when that RFP will go out.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you for your presentation. Thank you much. Do you want to be here? Your presentation tonight by Monica Ireland about our different ordinances from one to three.
Yes. So, I promised before we jump into legislation that I would do a presentation a little more comprehensive on each of the pieces of legislation, so we'll run through that now. So, during the October second council meeting, we talked about a lot of topics, but the three that really came out was allowing ice cream trucks within the corporation limit, allowing food truck usage in the corporation limit, and then giving explicit permission for food trucks at special events. Um, we also worked to figure out who exactly would be responsible for the enforcement of all three of these. So, on the agenda, you have three different pieces of legislation. We wrote it this way, so they're completely independent of each other. So, at the end of this, if council wants to approve one, if they want to approve all three, or if they don't want to approve any, they don't actually depend on each other. So, we'll start with the ice cream trucks, ordinance seven thirty-four. So, communities all over the country have been debating about whether to have ice cream trucks or not. The biggest concerns are tied to kids running into the street, congestion on sidewalks and roadways, vendors, criminal background, noise disturbances in residential neighborhoods, and then protecting the existing brick and mortar businesses. So, cities nationwide can be their banned ice contracts, heavily regulated it, and then there's some that allow them freely. So, there's not really a one really good benchmark. So, in nineteen ninety-eight, the city conscious, made a conscious effort to not allow ice cream vendors along with other roadside vendors. The decision was based on safety and protecting the brick and mortar businesses. So, you'll find newspapers all over the United States about children getting hit while chasing an ice cream truck. And then local businesses actually came out and wanted to protect their substantial capital investment that they put into their brick and mortar. So, ordinance three, or seven thirty-four, um, what we really talked a lot about was the nostalgia tied to ice cream trucks and the nice sound of the music playing on a warm summer day. We also discussed, um, children having access to ice cream without the parents having to load them up into a car and take them to a facility. So, staff and I looked at, you know, where is their availability for ice cream and the number of locations provided in the community. So, on the next map, which I wasn't sure, so I bought a paper copy too. This map has ice cream stores, gas stations, convenience stores, fast food restaurants and restaurants. What's missing from here are the pharmacies, CVS, Walgreens and Rite all have ice cream in them, as well as Starfish and Coffee just started selling vegan ice cream this weekend. So, there's more locations than was on the map, but I don't know if anyone needs to see a closer version of the map. So, there's several locations within the corporation limits that do have some accessibility to ice cream and so those are those. If council would like to move forward, staff would recommend that we regulate the industry and this is what you'll find within ordinance seven thirty-four. So, there'll be two different vending licenses. One is the vendor license, the other is the vehicle license. The vending license would be similar to our solicitor license, so they would wear it around their neck and that would be a hundred dollars per person. The reason for that is we would use the majority of that money to do a background check on each individual. And then the vehicle license would be fifty dollars per vehicle and it allows us to capture and maintain insurance information and information on the actual company. And then we would ask for proof that the applicant is current and compliant with the city income tax, both pure and net profits. You'll also find in the regulation that no person would bend between nine AM and nine PM or sunset, whichever came first. The music would not play before eleven AM and they would not play during five to six PM. It's typically for dinnertime, so that the kids can actually sit at the table and spend time with their family and in accordance with our noise ordinance, so it couldn't be louder than the decimal in our noise ordinance. No person would bend unless the ice cream truck is lawfully parked or stopped. No person can bend except from the side of the truck away from moving traffic in near the curb. They cannot bend in the roadway and they cannot stop in a one-way street and bend from the left side. And no driver of an ice cream truck shall back up or go into reverse in any way. And there are no unauthorized rights. We would also say that they need to stop within twenty feet of the intersection and they cannot double park. The driver shall play music or bells, shall not drive, or play music or bells in excess of the ordinance. No person shall engage in retail sales on these specific streets for clear safety reasons. And, um, they could sell in the central business district if they got permission and you'll see this language, something similar to this in another section, which is maximum of four The truck itself would have to have specific lamps and lighting. Um, there would need to be a convex mirror so they can see the front of their truck, make sure they don't run any children over. And then each side of the vehicle would be marked with letters and numbers and there's a bunch of regulation tied to the size and shape of all of that. So, that would be ice cream trucks. Do we have any specific questions on that? Ordinance?
Does the, the ice cream truck have to have anything associated with the, the health?
Yeah, in the legislation, on all of these, it states that none of our rules would supersede the health department. So, they still have to do all of their health and safety checks through the health department and the state.
Ms. Sheen? Have there been any discussions or concerns about litter from these ice cream trucks? Obviously, there are gonna be in residential neighborhoods that don't have garbage cans, I can see, along the streets and, um, will they, the trucks be providing waste disposal for the wrappers and stuff?
I think technically, it would actually follow the person who bought the ice cream to be responsible to make care of the trash.
Do you have any kids here?
I don't know.
Well, if it's on a residential street, most of those kids are coming from their home and most of them have garbage cans.
More other questions?
Keep going?
Keep going.
All right. So, the next step was ordinance seven thirty-three. This is the food truck standards. So, fridge trucks have been allowed in the city for special events. Usually, these events are tied to nonprofit entities. Food trucks are allowed on private property for private events without contacting, need to contact the city. And council is interested in allowing more food trucks within the court limits. So, we did research and found the National League of Cities did, um, a study on called Food on Meals: Best Practices for Integrating Food Trucks into City Life. So, we'll go through that pretty quickly. that pretty quickly. So food on meals. The number one recommendation prior to implementing any food truck policy would be to do these following five things. Hold town hall forums and private meetings with core stakeholders. Engage dialogue and the building of relationships among competing stakeholders. Implement pilot program to determine what regulations to adopt. Use targeted practices as a way to address underserved areas in the city. And then identify private vacant lots and create partnerships for mobile vendors to gather and bend at the same location. So the concept of food on meals is that many cities are struggling to find a balance between those who hate food trucks and those who desire free market on vending the food trucks. So the National League of Cities explored 13 communities of all sizes to see what worked and what did not, and there were four recurring themes and commonalities: economic activity, public space, public health, and public safety. So economic activity. The key objective of food trucks is to earn revenue. This is the same for brick and mortar restaurants. The level of competition food trucks create is of concern to brick and mortar because of this substantial capital investment in the facilities, in employment, and in income and property tax. Cities, on the other hand, want to create opportunity for economic development because it raises tax revenues by density and creates a level of attractiveness for businesses and residents. So the only recommendation they had under economic activity was to streamline the permitting process. Mobile vending permits have these listed up, so exactly what they are. Mobile vending permits, and the trend is between 110 and $1,500 annually, have a checklist of additional permits needed, the mobile vending unit physical inspection checklist, and a list of mobile vendor responsibilities. Under public space, they recommend that we look at the unique set of challenges. So by just opening it up, sometimes you have overutilization, unwanted congestion, pollution, and conflicts among the different stakeholders. So the league recommends one set of regulations for use of public space and how much time trucks are allowed to bend. They say four hours or longer is recommended. Proximity restrictions from brick and mortar, they recommend 200 feet or less. The longer distance from restaurants favor brick and mortar and other businesses, but is disadvantaged to trucks. Under public health, the sanitation, cleanliness of trucks, and the disposal of waste, the league recommends adopting a regulation to manage that. And then under food safety, that varies nationwide, but here it would be like county through the health department. Public safety, so on private property, they recommend that you're lenient on the regulations unless you have a very dense region. Vending near schools, there should be a restriction on operation during school hours and have from schools that you would have from restaurants. And then obviously pedestrian safety. So the ordinance that's before you tonight, ordinance 733, the purpose is to promote and protect the public safety, convenience, comfort, prosperity, and general welfare by regulating food truck activities through the state of Gainesville. We have not done any of those five recommendations. We have attempted to meet the four recurring themes. So under economic activity, we streamlined permitting by having one permit, the mobile vending permit, which costs $500 a year, or $250 if they apply after August 15th. In the public space, we would allow it in commercial and industrial zoning districts. They would have to park on a hard surface lot with the principal building and a limited number of trucks, which is in the ordinance, exactly how it's limited. They would be located 250 feet from the main entrance of eating establishments, and they could operate between 7:00 AM and 10:00 PM unless granted a special permission. Under public health, they would comply with all local, state, and federal laws, and then the mobile truck is responsible for proper disposal of waste, and that includes grease and any other items. Public safety, we have in there that the food trucks must be located a minimum distance of 25 feet in all directions from fire hydrants. So that's ordinance 733, food trucks standards.
Questions?
I have a question I saw in there. When I was reading it, there was something about, like, businesses having food trucks come in, and that they would have to get a permit? Or say, if I was having a party and I'd have a food truck, I would have to get a permit to get a food truck? Is that correct?
The private property is exempt from this. They don't have to get a permit if it's a private property issue.
As long as they're on your property.
So a business, a mar ball, if they wanted to have a food truck, they would not need a permit? Is that correct?
Right, as long as it's on their property.
As long as it's on their property. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
So I've got some questions concerning the insurance part. I noticed in the legislation that the ice cream truck is required to have $500,000 worth of liability and $25,000 of property debt. My car's worth more than $25,000. I think that number is way low. I mean, if you really, if they damaged a couple of cars on a street or whatever involved in an accident, that $25,000 is not going to go far at all. It's going to take care of maybe one car. If there's more than one car, they're going to split that up. So I'd recommend that we look at maybe something more along the property damage. If you're going to have, generally, they're going to have their $500,000 liability. What the policy's going to say is going to say it's a combined single limit, so regardless of how the accident occurs, they've got a $500,000 bucket. But if you're saying only $25,000, you may want to change that or consider changing on that. And then the other thing there I noticed is the food trucks, there's no requirement for insurance, and I wondered why that is in the legislation.
Was it one of the ones that we had looked at of various other communities, and it wasn't spelled out for that? I would assume that if you are a mobile vendor, that you would, you know, have that for your own protection, because basically, that's your business on meals.
Same with the ice cream truck. I just think we need to put some, I would suggest we could use that same language and incorporate it. I would think that would be wise, because you could have some rogue food truck that doesn't have it, and maybe we'd want to be able to have that requirement. And I do notice that in the second, in the food truck legislation, in the definitions, it talks about ice cream trucks, and it also, under the certain sections, they talk about ice cream trucks. Is that just because, I don't know why, why do you have a regulation for ice cream trucks, and then you're talking about in the food, in the food truck?
There's actually a section in the food truck ordinance that says that ice cream trucks are exempt from this specific legislation, because we wanted each one to stand alone to give you guys the opportunity to approve one or two. That's all.
I was actually insured with Christine about the insurance as well, property damage. It's for $25,000, it's a state minimum for an individual.
Move on to the...
Yep, and the last one. Amend ordinance 73511 for roadside stands. So for housekeeping purposes, council wanted to look into editing our current ordinance, which is 73511 of 1998, to explicitly state special events may have food trucks with the city manager's permission. So under section 1, point E, we added special permission for city manager may be granted for, or the city manager may be granted for a temporary period only not to exceed four days when associated with special events. And then I explained not to exceed four days came from Ohio Advice Code. They define temporary food establishments as a retail food establishment that is operated at an event for not more than five consecutive days. So we put not to exceed four days to meet the Ohio Advice. And that's all.
Assuming that these ordinance are, there's not a rush to pass any of them tonight.
There's not. I did do a recommendation slide, if you guys wanted to hear what my specific recommendation would be. If council chooses to approve ice cream trucks, staff recommends uploading the current legislation. You could look at increasing the insurance on it, and I could get rid of two insurance agents to figure out how much that should be. If council wants to move forward with food trucks, I would actually recommend that we go through those five recommendations of the league first, which would be holding town hall meetings, having conversations, building relationships, maybe implementing a pilot program, so we know exactly what our regulation should be, and then identifying specific lots and having them gather at lots instead of roaming throughout the city. And then the last one is staff recommends amending 735, staff does recommend amending 73511 of 1998 to explicitly allow for special events.
Any questions with their recommendations? Ms. Schuh?
You know, I, I looked at David Paul Caskey, DPO's, and I guess I want to bring the brick and mortars more to life, more informed and concerned, but I honestly think that their investment in our city and the fact that they're here all the time is more important to us than having roving food trucks. I, I don't, I know that, I know they have in downtown where they have one day, like on a Wednesday, and it's on, it's on 13th and 12th in downtown Cleveland, it's Walmart Street, and they have six or seven food trucks that are there, but I just find this, to me, seems like, I can understand the ice cream trucks, because that was a nostalgic thing for me, but to have a food truck just coming in willy-nilly kind of bothers me. And I, I don't know if that's the case in this legislation, but if, if a food truck buys a license and they want to show up every week, I think that's going to have a problem for, for fats and for all, I don't know, I just have a problem with that, with our own city things. And I looked at David's email, and it really was quite delicate when written, and I think we should take it into consideration.
Well, and I appreciate your comments, and I would add that I do agree that we need to probably follow the five recommendations from the League of Cities on that particular thing. But I would also add that I think the brick and mortar establishments want business not just during lunchtime or something like that, where employee, employees are coming out to eat. It's, I guess from an economic development standpoint, I've seen some struggle to get commitment for brick and mortar restaurants, and I see a lot of people then going into men or in other cities for their lunch. We have a, we have people that come here and go to work, and then they leave after work and they go home outside of our city. So we have an influx of people here during the work week, and I think we're losing tax revenue from them going to other cities to eat. And I don't think that the establishments we have, especially due to some of their sizes, really can encapsulate everybody going out. And I also think there are times when you're out for lunch where you don't want to go in and sit down inside a brick and mortar place, and you don't necessarily want the fast food that is from a national chain like McDonald's. So this provides another type of opportunity for our business people for lunch, a different type of lunch setting. It also allows for the enjoyment of our perks, like we do during the fruit market. So I think, I agree, while I agree with you that I don't want to take away from our brick and mortar establishments, I also think that I want a vibrant feel at lunchtime in our community, and I like the idea of seeing people jumping out for lunch and paying on the food truck. I know that some of the businesses do have them coming to their parking lots, and they just serve those people. So I think we could extend it more and give more of a variety to our, especially during lunch hour.
Well, and I would go one step further. You know, I, my family and I, for dinner options in the city are incredibly limited. You know, the restaurants that we have available for dinner, Fish Bar, you know, that's, that's fabulous. Beaster 70 is not abnormal, family dinner night. We go to Perkins, we go to Bottom Bing. You know, there's not, those venues that are open during lunch aren't open for dinner most nights, and so we find ourselves limited to either higher-end options or fast food. So I look at this from my family perspective. I would love to be able to walk with my son and my husband somewhere to get food and pay at home versus, you know, Burger King or McDonald's or something like that.
I've got a question for Andy. Is this a good tax revenue for us? Is it easy to...
It would be very minimal money, city would receive to make the tax cuts.
Andy would be chasing all those trucks down the lane. Giving you a W for...
Only employees to have it there.
You know, the other thing too is that if we look at the recommendation for this, that council, the second bullet point, if council chooses to move forward, you know, there's five things there that are good recommendations, that, you know, use targeted practices and implement a pilot program. It doesn't mean they have to jump in and just go both feet, but might be able to try a target program and see if it works, and at that point in time, decide whether or not we want to move forward or not.
Absolutely, and I fully support doing these five steps, just because it's information gathering.
Chris?
You know, I, just to go back to Katie's statement, every food truck that I've been involving when I was working before I was retired, they were all only interested in lunch. They were not interested in having dinner. So I don't, and maybe that's something that we would put a restriction to then. You could say, if our, if our businesses aren't open often enough for dinner or have a certain timeframe that they're closed, well, then maybe that would be an opportunity for us. But historically, food trucks like the lunch tray, because they, people come out, they eat fast. I mean, I think when we have the food trucks, I mean, we do have food trucks for lunch once a week with our lunch market. I think that's sufficient. I don't think that we need more than that. Maybe even, maybe one more day, but I do like the special events, but you're not going to really get a bunch of, unless you have a special event, like we do for Party on Main and so on and so forth, where they come up, they know people are going to eat. And I don't think food trucks are going to come and do a routine, oh, let's go to Gainesville for dinner. I don't see that, but I might wrong.
I would, I would add that the, when we did, when we have the anti-cars come in, there was a level of frustration that occurred for a while, because they didn't feel that they had any options for eating meals. And we had hoped that they would go into our restaurants, but then our restaurants weren't open. So that is one event, the car shows, where we haven't allowed them to have any vehicle or any food vendors.
There is one.
One, now.
I, I sat on the board of the car crew for a year. They actually chose the hot dogs. They did not want to spend money.
Say that again?
I sat on the board of the, yeah.
They're thrifty, bro.
They're savvy on how they spend their money, and they picked the hot dogs. That was, that was their choice, and I think next to the hot dogs, they might go on the subway, but that was not it. They never even ventured over Spaz or Fats or anything like that.
But I think that one of the things is we, you know, trying to put the puzzle together is, you know, we have different activities throughout the summertime. We have Wednesday night concerts and other activities where we're trying to make things a destination in the evening. So the easier we can make it for people, the more enjoyable lends itself to, you know, having more opportunities, whether it's brick and mortar, because people don't like bees or flies or things of that nature when you're eating outside, or if you have the opportunity to pick up something and go sit in the pickup. I guess trying to expand as much in, again, we aren't deciding everything tonight, but I think we do need, as council, to go out to not only talk to the residents, but also the businesses as to what their thinking is, and let people know that we are actually looking at this, this moment in their... On that note, I'd like to move into legislation. Good move. All right, ordinance number one, first reading.
All right, ordinance number one, first reading.
Orders to enact Chapter 734 of the codified ordinances of the City of Gainesville pertaining to ice cream sales vehicles carts within the City of Gainesville, providing for licensing procedures and establishing violations, declaring an emergency.
Will we do some first reading?
Sounds good. Ordinance number one, we'll move on to that first reading. Ordinance number two, second, or first reading.
An ordinance to enact Chapter 733 of the codified ordinances of the City of Gainesville pertaining to food truck standards, declaring an emergency.
I guess I'd make a motion to table this until a lot of time with the five recommendations from the League of Cities.
Second?
Okay, we'll keep this table until we.
Ms. Shue?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mrs. Donato?
Yes.
Mrs. Jenkins?
Yes.
Mr. Augustine?
Yes.
Mr. Futter?
Yes.
Mr. Hack?
Yes. It should be tabled until you can get the five ordinance spoken about. Our ordinance number three, first reading.
An ordinance amending section 735.11 of the Gainesville Court of 1998 relating to roadside stands and selling on the street, declaring an emergency.
Is this something that we need to have on, go on to the readings, or is this something that we can approve tonight?
I think we should probably, in my opinion, delete it. Open if there's any questions.
I guess we will.
Say leave it up?
Leave it up.
Okay, that'll stay, stay on first reading, and old business, medical marijuana dispensaries.
If you guys had had enough presentations, if I could give one more.
So there's been some update on dispensaries in the state of Ohio. So in summary, the application timetable is kind of tight. There are limits on location, which is 500 feet from community addiction services, schools, churches, public libraries, public playgrounds, and public parks. The security has to be on 24 hours a day, and there's lots of restrictions on that. There needs to be two employee minimum at the facility during the peak hours, and then every time in the middle of the day. So that's the update.
Any questions?
This is really for medical dispensary, not recreational, right?
Correct. Recreational is still illegal in the state of Ohio.
Correct. So are these facilities then, I guess what I want to ask is if maybe you know or don't know is, so for all three of those counties, there's only be two places where it can be dispensed?
Correct.
At this point?
Correct.
So it sounds like they won't have to do much effort because everybody will only have two places.
I think that's what the idea was, yeah.
Is there any idea on how much space they use, how much?
Kathy, did anybody?
Nobody's given me real clear space requirements.
No, they do need specific vaults and packaging, and so when that key employee is not there, everything has to be locked up in specific containers that no one can actually touch. So there probably needs some space, but they, there's no limits in the legislation, so I'm not sure what that would look like.
And as well, as much as like a regular pharmacy, at any point in time, there's usually just two employees. Most of those, maybe three at most.
Yeah, they can only, they have to have a minimum of two. And I, I don't think anyone would really go above and beyond it unless the client felt that too much.
Did you happen to hear, see anything or anything about security cameras or anything like that?
Yeah, it's commercial-grade security cameras 24/7. They need to have date and timestamp in the tape itself, so at any point you can look at the background and see when it happened.
Have, by any chance, are you thinking about like the law lines that they have that are established in other states?
No, and I'm trying to do some research in Colorado, but it's so different because they have medical and recreational, so it's kind of hard to compare. So I haven't really gotten good data on that.
I have rumors that some children are getting a hold of medical marijuana in schools. And there's a real curiosity as to how are they getting it? And it's actually coming into the package of the boxes, and it says "medical marijuana" right on the boxes. And they're actually passing it out from cafeterias at schools already. And nobody really knows how they're managing to get a hold of it unless somebody is bringing it from a state that already has it into, into state of Ohio and dispensing it. Or, so it's a very interesting that it's already starting, even though you don't have your data to be able to play children.
Ms. Shue?
So even if we wanted to lift that moratorium, given their ticking time clock, we wouldn't be, we wouldn't, we wouldn't have time to really do that from a legislative process, or would we?
I mean, you can lift it immediately and do it under emergency and have it completely clear, but if you wanted to limit any more zoning on those specific districts, you would actually have to pass legislation on zoning, so it would probably not be the November 17 deadline.
So from my opinion, since there's only going to be two, I don't really think we need one. And I doubt we need a moratorium for it. But I will go first.
I'd like to ask from, from the administration's standpoint, would economic development, could this have a positive economic development? What kind of positive economic development would this have for us?
It's actually hard to tell, just because if they're only required to have two employees for a minimum of 30 hours a week or 35 hours a week, I would guess that would be two employees. And I'm not sure what the income tax looks like on that. I have no real data on what those people would get paid.
So that's the only financial impact that that would have?
I mean, a piece of property getting redeveloped and paying property tax would be big for the school system and county.
We also did it.
The net profits we also did.
Oh, the net profits.
I was saying.
They did really well there.
Right.
So then we would be gaining income from the back end of the line, basically. We'd be getting it from the?
We get 2% of the business's profits, that's what it was, net profits.
So if they made millions of dollars, we'd get a few hundred thousand.
My wife and I turned her, yeah, that's right.
I was sorry, you take my shoes off.
Yeah, Monica, we currently have a moratorium on this.
Correct.
And is the administration asking council to lift the moratorium, or are you just providing this information?
No, I was just providing information. I know that some council members had gotten phone calls, and I know that Kathy had gotten some phone calls, so I just wanted to make sure everyone understood what was going on. So if there needed to be a change in policy, that we were all on the same page.
And did I hear you say at the beginning of your presentation on this that we have had interest expressed as in somebody interested in having a dispensary here or interest from the community wondering where it's at?
Someone interested in having a dispensary, but then after further conversation, they actually wanted the township anyways. They didn't really want the court limits, so. There hasn't, as far as that, had about five falls. Yeah, it's not very much. And I heard nothing from residents.
Thank you for updating that. Administrative reports, law director? City manager?
Why, I'm talking a lot tonight.
So represented by Tally, presented House Bill 373, which would permit concealed carry firearms in courthouses, government buildings, and other government facilities, as long as the public subdivision doesn't enact an ordinance or a policy. So I just wanted to let council know that I am working on doing an internal policy on not allowing firearms in our courtrooms and public facilities. So if council, if this does pass, which I don't think it will, but if it does pass, we would have a policy in place to make sure that we keep firearms from the court and other public facilities. And we reached out to the, Nick Cindric at the court. He is 100% in support of that policy as well, so I'll leave a moving order and we're acting now.
Have we reached out to any of our other courts in the city, or would that not include them because it's not? Do you know what I'm saying? Because we have the juvenile court, we have the common.
I can email the legislation to those courts so they're aware that this is being discussed at the state level if that's what you're hoping.
I did reach out.
Oh, Dan Duncan for me?
Judge Uche and some of the other judges, I made sure that they were aware of it, and they, Judge Uche had already acted, and I talked to the chiefs of police in every municipality and they laid out the content that they had, one or another, I guess that they know what they will allow, many of this is.
This is just for citizens carrying concealed weapons?
Yes.
Would you like the judge to inhabit?
Judge, yes.
Yes.
Sarah?
That's all.
Clerk of council, correspondent, please.
The next regular council meeting will be called Monday, November 6, 2017, at 7:30. Holiday open house is November 14, from 4:30 to 8:00. That's also my birthday, if you want to take note of that. Spirit of the season is December 2nd, from noon to 4:00, at Gainesville United Methodist Church. City employees will be preparing for the upcoming snow rule season by going over plumbing routes, low hanging limbs and brush will be removed that may interfere with sidewalk clouds. Sidewalks will be piled when there are forages of snow or more, so please make sure vehicles are not blocking the driveways. There is a town hall meeting November 2nd, starting at 7:00 PM at Harvey High School in the James Diler Room. The topics for the meeting will be free renewal tax levies, fire, roads, and schools. The broadcasting system for the area has converted to digital, so Channel 12 is no longer available. City meetings are available to view at Gainesville.com and the Lory Library. Print articles are due Friday, November 3rd.
Thank you. Close any comments, Ms. Shue?
A few things, I want to reiterate the town hall meeting because it will be myself, Nick, and Jim, and our co-hosting this. So is it, do you want to host it? Anyway, the three of us are going to do it. And also too, I want to just mention, I know it's kind of after the fact, but I had a lot of fun at trunk or treat. And I really want to thank everybody that came out for it, and everybody that did their candy and all the cards and. I, there were so many kids there, and I, Paul and I got to judge the costume contest. And it was hard and fun, and we had a ride in it, so it was good fun had by all. And I do want to say that the, we did raise a little bit of money for the dog park as well, so thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Augustine?
No, everything's inside, thank you.
Mr. Futter? Just reminding, I think it's November 1st that the meet pick up by Republic ends? I don't. Is it December 1st? Okay, maybe if we could check on that, just to kind of give people an update and put it on our website. And I might be wrong, cause long, once again tonight, so on the, leaves are always an interesting, at this point in time. Also, I think on October 26th, there's a meet the candidate night held over at a high school. And, you know, we are in the election season, so I encourage everybody to get to know the candidates. I also encourage everybody to get to know the issues that are up, and make sure you're aware, and most importantly, to get out and get out and vote. That's all I got.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just, I just always like to reiterate that I really appreciate good debate on topics and that it's, I think it's healthy and good for us and for our community, and so I wanted to mention that. I also wanted to really thank Kathy for her presentation, but more than that, I really wanted to acknowledge and tell her, I appreciate your expertise and all the hard work you do. It's wonderful how much you know about what's going on and with all of our sites and all of that. At any given time, you can ask your questions of me, you can have the answer readily available, so I really appreciate that. Also, I appreciate again the work we've done with the Marvell and maybe some of the other facilities, and thank you for that. And the other thing I appreciated tonight really was the work that all of the staff did to research and provide us their thoughts in the presentation on the ordinancees tonight. I appreciate the follow-through on all of that. I, I did not get to trunk or treat, and I know that I really missed out on a wonderful event. That is always a great event, and I know the weather was great, and I do thank all of the staff members that volunteered and participated in that.
Katie?
Well, I would also like to thank Kathy for all of her work. I know she's, she's always had these fabulous ideas and has always executed them beautifully. And it's nice to see some of those other ideas coming through now. I also wanted to thank her for the Marvell tour. I thought that was fantastic. I would love to do that more. Anytime you can get us in the business, just call me. Because that was, that was really wonderful. Echoing what Jim talked about with the leaves, the other day I drove past a gentleman who was blowing leaves into the road. And so I'm just going to ask residents, anybody who watches this, please don't blow your leaves into the road. You know, make sure if you have a drain in front of your house, you know, make a little effort to keep that clean out so that we don't have any flooding. I know, what was it, yesterday when we had that horrible rain? You know, that, that could have been a recipe for disaster is that leaves start to fall. And then also political yard signs. Make sure that you're checking if you have your yard signs in your, on your property, that you're checking them to make sure that they're stable in the ground. Because, you know, all it takes is that one windy day and everybody has yard signs everywhere. And that's it. Thank you.
Ms. Fitzgerald?
I would also like to thank the Parks and Recreation Department and all of the city employees who helped out in trunk or treat Saturday. It was a fun event. It was, I'd say more than a thousand people showed up. It was a huge success. And being a business owner, I know how, how much work goes into preparing for it, setting up and tearing down. And everything went really smooth, and I know it was a lot of work, and they did a great job, and thank you. That's it.
I'd like to thank Lucretz offer, maybe part of the candy? Also, Lucretz calling me that there was about 10 mailboxes that got knocked down by one of the contractors that went out of the little men's accident on the freeway. It was very respectful of them to call all 10 of us and have our mailboxes replaced. I just thought it was.
A redneck.
A redneck.
So at this point, Paul, I just wanted to say I looked on the end of this. It was October 1st through December 15th, name of collection, I saw it's, we still have time.
Maybe tomorrow is the next time.
And, well, they're picking up yard leaves now every week instead of every other day.
So at this time, I need a motion to adjourn to executive session.
I make a motion to adjourn to executive session. In accordance with Article 2, Section 6.2, consider the appointment appointed Missel Visson, promotion, promotion, and compensation for employee or official office senior.
Second?
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mrs. Donato?
Yes.
Mrs. Jenkins?
Yes.
Mr. Augustine?
Yes.
Mr. Futter?
Yes.
Ms. Shue?
Yes.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.